All right, if I could get everybody to rise to the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to your flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank everybody for being here. A primary reason that for this meeting is to discuss with ODOT and Delaware County about future changes and whatever, what some plans to get some idea of plans for roads and such in the township. So. I guess we can start with Mr. Jackson's. As a question.
Um, well, I'm just gonna let Tony lead on the improvements for ODOT.
Yep, good morning. I'm Tony Terauski. I'm the District Six Deputy Director for ODOT, so I have the Delaware office. Yeah, really hoping just today have open lines communication, give you guys some updates on what we're doing on road projects, let you ask questions and then kind of go from there. So I think probably the most immediate one is the safety improvement at Fancher and six oh five. So we're planning to build a roundabout and replace some culverts while we have the roadway closed. So what we're going to be doing, having had our pre-construction meeting, the contractor is Alan Stone, but through some conversations with them, we're anticipating that closure to start in April. Kind of mid-April timeline that's somewhat dependent on when they can get some of the lighting poles. Like everything else, most of the supplies around the industry are getting better. Electrical steel, not so much. So they're trying to get those in there as soon as they have that. We'll start to have some firm dates. We usually try to roll out closure notifications about two weeks in advance. We'll obviously have you all on that to help, obviously give you the info and hopefully you can help share it out as well to the township residents.
That's interesting because we've, we've had two different mail, three parties from Hatch Road come to us the last meeting and they're very concerned about people cutting around, going Bevelheimer Keen to Hatch Road. You know, if you've been on our Hatch Road or not, but it will not support truck traffic by any means. It's a narrow road. Part of it's unimproved. It's chip sealed forever. And so that's bad situation Hatch Keen is a little better, but not much. So we need some assistance to try to keep trucks off of that. Uh, let alone, everybody's got GPS nowadays, so they're going to cut around with their cars. So have you got any? Plans for us?
Yep. So our signed detour will take us over on state routes over to Johnstown and back up. And we'll also have hard closure set closer. Um, we've used message boards somewhat effectively in similar areas around the, around our district, um, and we'll also have repaired quantity set up if people do cut through. So basically what we'll have our do is probably a project engineer manager drive some other routes with whoever you would like from, uh, from the township. And basically how the kind of our record, here's how it was, and we had asphalt quantities to do repairs afterwards to bring it back to what it was.
Okay.
I think we have forty yards. That's kind of just a rough cut estimate. We can be more if necessary.
Well, like I say, the Hatch Road especially is super narrow and we have people that walk on there, residents and so they're very concerned.
And we can work with the Sheriff and OSP as well to see what, what additional enforcement they can do. Obviously they have limited resources, but if they can shade over a little bit, that can also help as well. So.
I know, uh, we're concerned and we, we, it was brought up in this meeting we just had, Dave was referring to. The, the, the truck traffic and we, we had that happen when thirty seven was closed. And we had tankers going on, on one of our curviest, probably one of our curviest least, you know, improved roads up in that quadrant. And, you know, I, I know the residents will be looking for some, some help maybe from the, the Delaware County Sheriff's Office and from OSP. I, I think that is going to be a uh, uh, something they're really going to be asking for because we all know what's going to happen. We can put every sign in the world out and somebody's going to try to cut it short. So.
Yeah, people really do just.
Yeah.
Follow that.
Well, and, and it's not just, it's not just the truck traffic. I know our one, one resident was in here the other night and his, their biggest concern was the fact that they walked down that road and as Dave said, it's a narrow road and it's not like we have sidewalks and and somebody's, you know, somebody getting hit by a car or by a truck, it's, it's too late to, I'm trying to fix it.
I appreciate, I mean, safety is always the first concern. Um, so again, we'll, we'll see what kind of additional signage we can do as well. Sometimes also if you can catch them and inform them, hey, this is a narrow road. You're not going to be able to navigate. Some people will, not everyone will react.
Yeah.
Probably with it, but some people will think twice and.
Some of those roads, a truck will not be able to make a turn on. So.
I've had some more discussions up in Marion County in a somewhat similar situation with the roundabout and those floors were something where mostly at that, they were like sixteen foot rows up there. So.
A, a question I know I've had posed to me is too is, uh, as far as the state route, state route six oh five, for an example, it's, it's it's a, it's a north, south corridor. Uh, we're putting around about it. Is there discussion, thought, planning, whatever, as far as potential widening?
Not in the near term, but I haven't actually analyzed. We've really focused on the intersections. So. That's really, you can get quite a bit of capacity out of the two lane road. You can see what is the friction is those intersections.
Yeah.
Is there going to be a speed limit change around approaching that?
Um, not as part of the construction project. We'll have lead in advisory signs, but not a speed limit change. Okay. And we are limiting it to a forty day closure and incentivizing them about forty five hundred dollars a day to try to do it faster. Now, there is a minimum, you know, they're not going to be picking up this, snapping their fingers and do it overnight, but that, you know, pushes them to try to limit the duration. We recognize there's impacts to the.
Yes, sir. Uh, you, you say there's an incentive to get it done early. Is there any penalties for being late?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, hopefully we can call them liquidated damages, but it's like on the order of two or three thousand dollars a day on a contract of this size.
Yeah, sorry. I didn't know whether we were able to ask.
Yes, sure.
I, I just wondered because of, you know, the problems on our unimproved roads, any chance we can get more posted signs up there like lower to twenty five so that at least everybody knows while they're on that road, it's twenty five and if the sheriff's there. You know, they're going to dig them. Maybe it, once people would see that, they'd be more inclined to go out around knowing that it could be patrolled in a lower speed limit on the temporary.
Temporary, it's like a temporary construction and speed reduction.
Thought, I mean, looking to reduce instructor, any traffic on that road. If somebody was out walking, it's a hell of a lot safer. Obviously it's only twenty five miles an hour.
Wow, I, I know my, my initial thought, and that's a good idea was, you know, you, you, you drive down any, any road where there's construction and it instantly says that, you know, basically about if you, if you hit a construction worker, your fines are doubled, you know, maybe if you hit a pedestrian, it's, you know, tripled. Uh, you know, we need to, we need to.
Anything like that to encourage people from on those secondary roads and use the posted detour, I, I think would be helpful, even if it's, you know, again, just a temporary piece. So anyway, just a thought.
I might talk about that with our county partners, what's really viable. Um, I will say ODOT does do variable speed limits as part of construction zones on our freeways.
Mm-hmm.
That's kind of this same thought as when people are out there working adjacent to the roadway, we drop the speed limit ten or fifteen miles an hour. And when they're not there, we try to return it up to higher, to the original posted limit. So.
Well, I know my residents would ask, well, if we can do that on a freeway, why not do it someplace where there's people standing, people walking, people, you know, driving, coming in and out of their driveways. Uh, you know, a lot of our speed limits out here are forty five plus. So you, you started crippling and dubbing, doubling and tripling and quadrupling your traffic flow and the, it's to reduce it till in that time might be, if possible, would be a good idea.
I'll have some talks. I don't think we've got it elsewhere on a local, like on a two lane roadway that I'm, I have detour route that I'm aware of, but investigate if that's something we have the authority to do or the, or the county. I won't speak for. I, I think each road is a little different, right? Some of them are township roads.
We have township, county and states. All right.
Maybe in keeping with your question, what else is going on on six oh five, uh, not in Harlem Township, but at your front door, uh, Walnut and six oh five is also expected to be a roundabout here in the near term.
They did sign the date on that. They, they should be, right away plans are being developed now. And, um, construction is expect, well, sells in July twenty twenty.
So we'll sell next summer. If you're familiar with that route, it's kind of north edge of Albany and it's currently it's split. Right. On the intersection, we're going to line it up at a roundabout. But I has a, a large pipe underneath the intersection, so we'll do all that replacement while it's closed. So. Um, I would, I don't know if we have the duration on the closure yet, but I would expect a little bit longer, given the structural work that's needed underneath the intersection. But I think as we get closer, we'll share some info and you guys would also be included on that, just since you're so close.
Well, two things you talked about, you know, you talked about the, the traffic flow and, and we all know probably the increase in traffic that we're going to possibly be seeing. Uh, we also have a, a, you know, an, an intersection right here at, at, at Center Village, which is, you know, our county and then the state. Is there any thought or plans for that? And then the other thing that also relates to that, we currently have a four way stop there. And if traffic is increasing, the amount of traffic that's going to be backing in front of our firehouse potentially. You know, could, it creates a safety issue.
Um, you know, really, I think all the way through here, we've known at some point a signal may be warranted, and I use that term warranted as, as far as justified through analysis. So we're consistent around the state and really around the nation. Um, it's been out there, what, two years at this point?
There.
It was October eighteen, twenty twenty two.
Yeah, coming up two years.
I mean, it's, 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 it's been a marked improvement.
Yeah.
But I guess my, my next concern on top of what we currently have, yes, we're, we're, we're decreasing the amount of accidents. But unfortunately, a four way stop is still confusing to some. And the, the amount of traffic that backs up and potential.
We'll be willing to rerun kind of our analysis sheets to see how, how close is it to warranting a signal. Um. I think that, you know, long-term adds volumes increase. That is probably in the cards at some point. Um, we'll see how close we are and we can have that conversation with them. So. Signals are their benefits and that they give openings for cross traffic, but they also have some safety drawbacks. People, just like a stop sign, people can still run them.
Right.
Yeah. And it's like Carl said, if we can consider something out here in front of the firehouse, H marks or something.
We had put a request in, uh, in December of twenty twenty two for ODOT to look at putting something in uh, front of the fire station or like do not block. Uh, and we.
I'll check and see. Um, you might remember Jerry Sainer from our office. He took a position over in Dayton.
That is who I was talking with. So.
So regardless, we'll, we'll check that and see if that's, I can kind of envision what you're asking for. Um. There was a tri- township fire department very near my office on the point in Delaware and they had some striping.
Right.
You know, striping signs, something to let people know.
Not on six oh five, but I believe within your limits, state route thirty seven and the county line. So multiple jurisdictions. That is a roundabout that was recently funded, um, as far as part of the intel packages. So they're really just starting design. You just awarded the contract for the design, right?
We actually just offer, authorized the consultant to proceed on February twenty seventh. So they're just beginning to get underway and, um, they're expected to be complete by December thirty one, twenty twenty six. So they're going to move pretty quick.
Yeah, so that sequence, they'll, they'll do their survey work to get some information, the lay of the land, they'll do some concepts. You know, just different layouts for the roundabout. And they'll go to the public, share that information, get feedback. Pick the one that makes the most sense, balancing costs, benefits. Um, impacts to the public, impacts to, I think there's a waterway there, right? There's a decent side.
Just there, so I mean.
Kind of balancing all those, what's the right fix? Pick that and then go through plan development, like the right away acquisition and then construction.
And you say twenty twenty six, is that the planning stage ending or the actual installation? December twenty twenty six, they plan to have a roundabout in place.
Yeah. That's the plan.
Okay.
A lot going on, obviously. So. In keeping with state route thirty seven, we're also doing kind of a ten year look ahead to studying that route basically from Delaware from the intersection of twenty three all the way over to one sixty one or all the way over to seventy.
Third one sixty one. I mean, just one sixty one. They'll look at one sixty one to seventy separately.
Yeah. Basically looking at what's the growth we're seeing. Um, Morpseed and Mid Ohio Regional Planning Commission recently updated their, their traffic model. They've replaced SimCity as a kid and say, hey, it's industrial or residential or farming and they see how many trips are coming out of it. They've updated it to reflect intel on different growth, see what kind of volumes we're expecting to see. We use that information to see what breaks when on thirty seven. I'll say break callously, but where, where are the friction points? Where do we need to invest our money first? Like you're going to be additional intersection improvements, like we've just been talking about, roundabouts, different things. So we'll see now looking ten years out and then we'll be also looking longer term than that, but, um, looking thirty years out is almost a guess at this point, all the change we're seeing. So at least we can predict hopefully what we're going to need and then generate projects to, to mitigate that.
One good thing, you have a model to look at. Just go to Chandler.
Right. Well, we actually have benchmarked with them a little bit because we saw that, uh, they were going through what we're seeing. So.
Yeah. That was poor planning, a lot out there.
Well, they're, they're interesting and a little different from home rules in the point. That's always a, not a unique to Ohio thing, but it's something to consider. So. And that study, I don't think we have, is it about a year timeline for that for the politicals?
Yes, twelve months to completion.
I think that'll be good. And then really that whole, that study is, is here's what we think we need. And then the districts, myself is Delaware County and then my counterpart is Jason Sturgeon over in Lake County. We'll say, hey, we'll start picking off projects that make the most sense, provide the most benefit first.
Is there currently anything as far as, I mean, east-west has always been an issue across Delaware County? Is there anything that pertains to this area that is in even in the talking stages?
Um, thirty seven is a big one. Um. A lot of the other east-west routes are county routes. So definitely give Rob and Chris Bowser and credit. They've spent a lot of effort looking at, um, railroad grade separations in the center part of the county, trying to improve east-west connectivity. Might toss them if you have any specific you want to highlight. I know we're I think Fancher were making some investments here and then over at the county line in partnership with Lake County. Anything else to add, Rob?
Yeah, I can, um, again, Rob Riley, she's the engineer with Delaware County. Um, so we have, uh, worked, been working with Tony and, and Jackie on uh, two projects on County Line Road. Through the, the Silicon Heartland initiative that ODOT has been, the governor has been, uh, pushing to really help uh, local agencies grapple with the, uh, the increase for it from intel. Uh, so uh, but Franklin County, uh, and Delaware County as well as Lexington County, uh, you know, the heart of it. So uh, the two roundabout projects on County Line Road or Fancher Road and also at Center Village Road. And so those are going to be developed on a similar timeline to the route thirty seven round out. Those are funded out of the same program. Uh, we're dealing with two hundred dollars. Adventure and Center Village as county projects. But, uh, those are, as of now, uh, scheduled to start construction. One will start, start in twenty twenty five. The other will start in twenty twenty six. That's at the same time.
You know which one this is?
I know, yeah. Yeah. We have some planning to do there.
And I thank you even further for us to interact too and make sure whatever state system detours we have work, work nicely with the county. And further into Lake County for that matter. So.
We're trying to six two with everybody trying to get out there.
At the other end of Fancher Road, uh, we are looking at the intersection at Harlem Road. For a roundabout at that location as well, we're, we're very aware that township has, uh, been doing some planning work. Uh, and there's been some discussion of, um, maybe a parallel route to Fancher Road, uh, as development occurs. I think that's something we'll continue to talk about, but um, frankly, for right now, we have, um, an intel opening date of, you know, sometime in twenty twenty five or twenty twenty six. That will immediately push quite a bit of traffic onto Fancher Road, basically modeling that, um, Tony just talked about, that we've, we've been included in that. Um, so Fancher Road sees a, a good chunk of that east-west traffic. Center Village sees a good chunk of that east-west traffic. And so, uh, we're really making an effort to invest in those corridors because we'll be looking at have some spot safety improvements to see if there's any areas that we can address, you know, uh, narrow spots in those roads. So maybe widen the shoulders, increase in drainage, and then obviously look at the pavement condition. We'll be monitoring that as, as we always do. So. Yeah, overall, at the kind of levels, as Tony talked about, we are investing a huge amount of money in, uh, getting better east-west connectivity, particularly through Orange Township with the railroad tracks that basically bisect the county, um, both that, or we have three, um, Cheshire, sorry, north, south, the Cheshire Road and then the home road extension uh, that you may have driven on and then also have Orange Road. So three different grade separations that will put bridges to um, eliminate those, well, eliminate two of the aggregate crossings and then provide a brand new crossing like home road that will connect at the other farm development. So. What are the ones?
On the east-west corridor question, I know some things that have been posed to me is, and I, this part of this is probably county part of it was probably ODOT. Any dart throwing or questions or planning, you know, not only do we have railroads run north and south that block that, we also have large bodies of water. Any discussion on how the, in the future or plans to make any changes? Widening of bridges, adding bridges, uh, east-west is a, east-west is a, is a nightmare.
Yeah.
Across this county. I know I've spoken with the sheriff's department several times, just getting a deputy from the west side to the east side is is very time consuming.
Yes.
And we're going to be bringing all this additional traffic flow and all these additional folks and potential businesses, potential trucks and everything else. And unfortunately Harlem Township is kind of like where the funnel point, well, that's going to be coming from the northeast and, and or northwest and the west potentially at us. And we just want to see what thoughts and plans are, are not just getting it funneled into us, but once it gets to us, what's going to happen to it.
So you mentioned, uh, bridges, um. As of now, um, I will say as of now and, and for the foreseeable future, we have no plans to add an additional bridge over either Hoover Reservoir or Allen Creek, uh, lake for that matter. It would be extraordinarily difficult to do either one of those, um, starting with Hoover. That is the city of Columbus's water supply. Uh, that, that lake stores water, uh, to fill in a portion of that lake with a new causeway or a new bridge would be uh, extremely difficult from a logistical standpoint and getting the approvals and by city of Columbus. So the, the short answer is no, we don't have any plans for that. I will say, um, you know, Har, um, so we have a an agreement with, um, Franklin County. We, we share maintenance of Smothers Road. Uh, Franklin County actually maintains the entire causeway as well as city of Columbus. They maintain a, kind of the uh, physical presence of the causeway, the, uh, that county, Franklin County maintains the bridge. They actually just rehabilitated that bridge, uh, a number of years ago. So um, as Tony said earlier, a two lane road will carry a lot of traffic, you know, upwards of fifteen to twenty thousand vehicles per day. A two lane road can carry, it's really the intersections that are the, the choke points. And so, um, as we look at our system, uh, we don't necessarily see any four lane roads in Harlem Township for the foreseeable future, even at that, you know, horizon year for the, the modeling runs twenty fifty. Even at that point, highly unlikely we'll see any four lane roads that we may be getting close at that point, you know, or twenty five, thirty years from now, but as we sit here today, I wouldn't anticipate anything other than the infrastructure, intersections themselves and trying to make the, the segments as safe as possible with minor widening ditch work, that's, that sort of thing.
And I'll add, you know, thirty seven is our main contribution east to west. Obviously that's some other investments we're making actually this year. So this actually creates intel. We're not intel's an accelerant, right? But we always knew Delaware County was going to continue to grow, have been for a long time. Uh, in front of my office there at the east side of Delaware, we're widening, uh, that the railroad bridge is a choke point. It's only two lanes underneath. The work you're seeing and hopefully not getting caught up in too many backups. It's going to widen it out to five lanes. But by the end of next year, kind of that timeline, so City of Delaware, a big partner there. Um, and then over at thirty six seventy one, couldn't really wait any longer to replace the bridge. That's the work you're seeing today, but we do have the first phase of the interchange funded, um, working and involved with the county to keep that working, having a, a private investment also to feed that, um, build a split interchange like Gemini and Polaris. So I'm looking ahead to hopefully it shouldn't be turning dirt next year on that first phase. Um, try to invest in that current corridor. Um, building turn lanes at north and south Lena Road and thirty six, thirty seven. Sorry to do them both at the same time, but you got it. We did Domaguen and Cars or the county did Domaguen and Cars Corner a year or two before doing the interchange the year after. We're trying to squeeze everything in and um, dance around it, but making good investments to preserve the current corridor. And even things like, um, this is not funded, but pursuing upgrades to signals and sun berry. Just to help push traffic through. Obviously there's old, old sun berry and you can only push so much traffic through that, but um, trying to preserve that and help them manage the increase through there on that state route. Trying to do what we can, um, and also being recognizing people live next to these very busy roadways.
Um, you had a question?
Um, on the subject of sun berry, since we're talking about express traffic. How are you going to get traffic on thirty seven through downtown sun berry? Is there any plan for?
In the short term, I'm pursuing signal upgrades. So they're coordinated. So hopefully you see mostly green lights when you're driving through instead of getting caught individually. And that study of state route thirty seven is to look and see what kind of growth is needed long term. You know, where, where is there a breaking point? Um, I'm actually a big mall grad, so I know that curve. Everybody was certified. I know at some point, how many trucks can really not hate that every day? Is there a breaking point or we need to look at another option?
Because I, I mean, if you're bringing the traffic in from the interstate on Sunbury Parkway and just drop it at thirty six, we're thirty six and thirty seven split. And there's no plan beyond that. I don't understand what the traffic is going to do. I think, any planning or any, any comments at all from Sunbury or from any of the traffic commissioners?
As far as the actual interchange project, we kind of set that limit to connect there by show up with Sunbury Parkway. And that's kind of the limit of that specific project, but we are looking longer term on thirty seven, what else needs done? So that's, that's what that study is that we mentioned earlier is to look and see what other investments are needed on thirty seven to look at that growth east of where Sunbury Parkway will tie in. So.
If I can, if I could just jump in real quick, um, you know, obviously city, uh, city of Sunbury, uh, has authority to thin their boundaries, but to that said, we have regularly dialogue with the city, uh, representatives. Um, I know there is, that is probably front and center to the city right now. They recognize the need uh, to address that issue. There's some early discussions about the potential of maybe some connection routes outside the city. Uh, to divert some of that traffic. That's, it's too early to tell or to know what your timeframe may take. The, the discussions are out.
And one of the concerns I know I've had voiced to me from our, some of our constituencies, that thirty seven and the county line, you know, with, with the increase in truck traffic that is inevitably going to be happening over the, you know, the next several years. And coming through Sunbury, I mean, I know that's their issue as far as what's coming through, but one of the big concerns I've had is what kind of trucks? What kind of, you know, potential hazards are we going to be confronted with and what does our fire department need to be made aware of that potentially is coming into our township? You know, is there any plan for how to divert that maybe to the south and stay out on the major roads? One sixty one corridor and up that direction. Uh, you know, is, is that a thought? Is that a plan? Or, you know, I mean, I know it's enforceable nightmare. I understand that, but you know, if, if ninety percent of the trucks at least read the sign and only ten percent, you know, that's better than nothing.
We're actually having similar discussions on another state route in Delaware County and really the state route system is meant for trucks to use. Um, we really have limited tools to, um, to restrict that, um, even though it's a federal law.
Yeah.
You have the root of it. So, but I, I follow what you're saying and I'll maybe kind of have a start by that to investigate what's needed and what education we can give to the fire department. There's a lot out there. It really is.
I went up and sat and watched when Delaware, when Sunbury tried to have the big windmill blade brought through the township and what kind of nightmare that was. I can only imagine.
Yeah, oversized loads are a big thing. Jackie's spending, uh, a good job, uh, doing a lot of effort, you know, a lot of outreach and explaining a lot of the oversized loads, oversized loads from intel are coming up from the river. I don't think anything, anything comes through Harlem Township, but trying to do that coordination and like, you know.
One of the huge, one of the biggest transfer, trans. One of the huge, one of the biggest transfer trans. Mission or transfer just recently was being planned, the big uh tank, yeah, yeah. So maybe we need, we need to get with talking to the commissioners and the sheriff, maybe we need to invest in another uh weights and measures. Truck for the county.
None of those ones will be coming through here though, just so you know, they're coming up from the south.
These particular ones, but as we're going forward in the future, you know, not only everybody keeps saying intel, 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 there there's how many suppliers. That are the ones you probably need to be more concerned about than the intel, the guy that's making the thing to send to intel is going to have the stuff that we need to possibly worry about.
Um speak for him for either law enforcement leads in the county, but I'm sure Sheriff Bowser and then Lieutenant Curry leads the Ohio State. State Highway Patrol uh post there on twenty-three, um that will also have their um. Military enforcement, I'm sure they'd be willing to dialogue on that, so. The sixty-two study doesn't go through your your township, but it's very close, very similar to thirty-seven and that we're looking and seeing what does that corridor need and that. Probably has the most immediate pressure um because it is essentially the road out to intel from one sixty-one. You've seen ODOT widening one sixty-one. Still on target to have that open by the end of this year, at least as far as the additional lane. That goes out to sixty-two. City will always make some improvements within their corp limit. This study is really look to look at what remains between um New Albany's. I think it's just inside the pork limit and then up to Johnstown. Plan for what's needed, what kind of intersection improvements, some are already funded. They're kind of evident, but then what do we do with the rest of the roadway? Probably looks similar to what's within New Albany's pork limit in a lot of ways, so. Um and that's, I think we are going to announce that we're going through the selection process now and hopefully announce. So get going on that. Again, trying to bring resources to look at these.
With all of the improvements to county line road, you're going to bring that down on Tippit for sixty-two?
Like I can speak to that a little bit, so uh we've had um. A lot of discussions recently with Lincoln County, both county engineers off the same. Transpation prudent district. Um currently there's a an effort to look at a. Basically a plan to bring a separate road uh potentially connecting on Beach Road and Tippit. Uh at sixty-two, one of the the safety issues and. Tony can chime in, but I think the safety issues on sixty-two or you have skewed intersections, I agree. Makes uh turning off and on to those roads. We're going to call them less safe, so that's first and foremost a safety concern at the beach road and at sixty-two, but also recognizing. Uh beach road is, you know, if you started at I two seventy um going east, you've got sundary road. Which is basically in Columbus, uh pretty commercialized corridor, at least to get up to Lesterville. Um and then um basically until you get past um Hamilton Road, uh some exits and. All but then you don't have anything until you get all the way to Beach Road. So uh to think about freight and wanting to move from one sixty-one up into Harlem Township. Or just just uh folks trying to get where they need to go, uh really that beach road corridor has the potential to be a pretty good. Alternative for Harlem Township residents in the future to get to one sixty-one. Excuse me, sundary road, obviously it's limited, it's already a pretty congested road. Uh much still going down to to one sixty-one. Uh but beach road uh through the the technology campus there and uh. All we uh we think and I think Lincoln County thinks the same thing, that has the potential to serve this area in a better way than.
Yeah, so definitely looking at that. I am like you discussed, and this is actually outside my area, but as I understand it as well. Most of the construction traffic going to the sites coming off of Beach Road, but then long term their main front door for intel is going to be off of Mix Street. Now free up Beach Road again for other through traffic, so kind of they've been. Phasing and trying to build build their construction entrance first effectively, so. Did want to share too, I know you're discussing the merger um with City of Westerville, I just wanted to. From our point of view, I did want to make sure you're aware to state routes within a city. Become the maintenance responsibility of the city. I think Westerville is well familiar with that for state route three, I think they might have one sixty-one. But kind of make sure you're aware that six oh five, short sliver of state route thirty-seven would become maintenance responsibility. Snow and ice for the for the city. Now, ODOT will still provide funding opportunities for this state resurfacing. We call that urban paving, we'll pay for eighty percent of it, there's a twenty percent local match. But it would be a difference from today where the state is responsible for six oh five outside municipalities, so.
What was ODOT's uh ODOT's plan as far as they did chip seal past summer, was there a paving projection when?
I think twenty twenty-seven is what I was seeing for them to come back through with maybe a asphalt topping layer, I think there's additional repairs needed. Um as far as base or lower repairs, so. Trying to think anything else on that. ODOT does have the ability to do lane swaps, um so what that means is primarily for snow and ice coverage. If there's something that makes sense for the convenience of the public and the public agencies, we can actually. Go into municipality and cover a stretch of their road and they'll go out into our stretch just because it makes sense, say we have a salt bar or a convenient turnaround point. So those are tools in the toolbox, if as you evaluate this, it's a small thing in the big picture, but I didn't. Didn't want you going without knowing, again, I think Westerville will have that, had insight to how we've handled it, but. An example is uh New Albany, they cover some of our two-lane section of six oh five Franklin County for snow and ice, we pick up some of their freeway section. In front of, we have a major maintenance facility above Turtle one sixty-one. So again, it's kind of an in-service kind. In-kind service swap, if I can say it right, it makes sense, so it's a tool, uh because we're going to, if if this merger does go forward. We'll kind of have thirty-seven chopped up between Johnstown and sundary with different corporations, so something to think about, we can we can have those discussions if that goes forward. Um bridges would remain our safety inspection responsibility, our reconstruction responsibility. But then things like potable patching on the surface goes to the city. I think anything else major, I think drainage falls under the municipality as well. We've done a fair amount of corporate work out there, but. Again, just trying to give you a picture of how that would change, I think it's about thirteen million miles that are in the in Harlem Township from the state system.
You have historical data, like the cost of maintaining that, um like that's all available?
Yeah, we can pull our, basically our staff and equipment and materials um. I'll ask them to pull that for, say, a five-year period on average, if that works.
Anybody from the public, any more questions?
Uh from zoning, just just so you're aware. West the world, the township even without merger in Westernville, just still doing a lot of. Land use planning. And we've developed overlay districts, well, thirty-seven is an industrial corridor, but most of the rest of the township. Is heavily residential. Um and from that point of view, we would like to see. Round walkable residential. Center Village, the vision is to have a walkable residential area. That's in direct conflict with having a center building road as a east-west corner. So now, from my point of view, as a member of the zoning commission, as a member of strategic planning commission, as a member of the. Infrastructure working group, um I would like to see thirty-seven and one sixty-one used for newer traffic. And the township left down. Not branch road, not. Those are walkable areas in our, in our.
Uh so that's fair comment, um the only thing I could say is, you know, traffic will. Generally find a least pattern of persistence, so. Driving around thirty-seven is more convenient to that particular motor, they would certainly do that. Um we we're in a position, uh just like Tony, we have to respond to what uh traffic is doing. Uh where folks are going, where the problems are. You know, part of responsible planning is looking ahead. Uh and seeing, you know, regardless of what happened, where we think people ought to go, you know, where are they actually going to go? And that's what model, traffic models tell us, they they're pretty sophisticated. Uh computer models that basically look at travel man, travel times um. And proximity to the the origin and destination of those trips, and so they they compute um. With reasonable accuracy to where folks will very likely go, that doesn't mean that. They will, they will uh follow those routes, but we have a pretty good idea, Fancher Road and Center Village are going to see pretty significant increases in traffic. And so whether we want that or not, I think we're just going to have to deal with the reality that that's that's going to happen now. With respect to uh pedestrian uh safety and pedestrian facility, we certainly share your opinion. We want to make sure that uh areas that have. Residences have access to those roads. That can be in the form of, um you know, obviously on rural roads, you can walk on, no problem, Sun Village Road, Fancher Road. Venture may already be there or is at least getting there to the point where it's it's not as safe to to walk on that road. Frankly, the best way to do with that is separate paths, you know, charities path sidewalks. And we're certainly open to having that discussion, we assist uh the other townships uh routinely do projects with. Uh other townships involving trails, sidewalks, uh there are some funding sources out there, the state provides some grant funding. Uh the county commissioners provide some grants, uh so there are all sorts of ways to get paths and sidewalks built. It's really just a matter of determining, hey, what's what's your priority and where do we want to see days?
Oh, that middle higher regional planning commission also has a bucket of their federal funds that they get from that. It's from the feds through the state as a pastor, they can fund some of those improvements, the county's going to be a good partner on that.
I know one of the questions too, now I just went talking about the venture. The, you know, there's, there's currently a roundabout, as you know, it's Smothers in Harlem. Fancher Road, looking at Fancher Road as a potential. East-west corridor with something that's kind of in the way about two-thirds of the way down. There's a cemetery, you know, how do we, what, putting a roundabout at that intersection is going to, in a way. Kind of drive people to Fancher Road. Fancher Road will never be able to be widened because of the cemetery. The parallel corridor that you mentioned, or one of you mentioned. To us, or at least I say to myself and I know to the committee, that parallel corridor makes a lot more sense. Simply because of the widening capabilities, keeping some of that traffic at the far southern, I mean. I I I'm sure the folks who own that property don't necessarily agree with me, but keeping some of that traffic to that southern end, the far southern end of the township. And keeping it off of Fancher and not let it become a corridor that everybody looks at. Is that even being thought as a focus to stay that to to go that route, because Fancher Road is. Unless you're planning on moving to cemetery, you're never going to be able to wipe.
So uh this is a good topic and I'm I'm glad you kind of uh brought it up again, so the uh. Uh the roundabout, uh we're looking at at Fancher and Harlem Road. Again, to the point of where traffic is going to want to go um as soon as intel opens. That's one of the routes they're going to use and we recognize that uh will have some potential safety. Uh impacts that are, I just drove through this morning, uh you do see traffic backing up going west on Fancher Road trying to turn left. Um a roundabout, uh every roundabout we've built, uh and I don't know that there's any data to show that roundabouts. Uh draw traffic or increase traffic or encourage traffic. Uh but they do address the traffic that's there, they make it safer, uh they make traffic flow. The point of uh kind of a, I mentioned earlier, the parallel route or a second route to alleviate some of the traffic on Fancher Road. Uh we're not uh opposed to that at all, uh that that concept, and I think it's it's certainly worth fleshing out the details. One of the uh issues we found, um you know, with new, first off, the issue is how do you pay for it? Uh I can give you a ballpark, you know, a new two-lane road um is between five and ten million dollars per mile. Maybe higher, that that cost keeps going up, so frankly, Delaware County doesn't have the resources to just to fund a brand new. Parallel route going from Harlem Road all the way to, I don't know where it would tie in. But it would be that as the area develops, uh that the development actually. Uh try to establish that corridor if there's going to be one. The the rub, I think, is that um. You know, i- if there's going to be residential development or commercial development, it's it's. Probably unlikely that a prospective developer will want to establish a highway through the middle of their development that will. Accommodate that through traffic um. Generally speaking, every time we've been in this situation, Evans Farm is a good example, uh we had some uh if you're familiar with what quiet road is. Um there there's always a conflict, developers want, particularly if they're residential or. Commercial, they want traffic going slow through their new neighborhood, and so uh. I would say it's very possible that a uh road corridor could be established through some of those developing areas. The rub is, no one's going to want that to be a forty-five or fifty-five mile an hour highway. And so uh the reality is, I think we have to recognize, yes, that corridor could carry some traffic. But more than likely, that's going to be a lower speed facility, it's going to be walkable. Uh it may not be as attractive as Fancher Road is in its current condition, so. Um to the point of the cemetery said earlier. Highly unlikely you're going to see any four-lane roads in the township for foreseeable future. Um there is some ability to at least make the hill safer. Uh potentially putting in retaining walls, doing some very minor widening to get that to a normal two-lane width. Uh improve the site distance, improve the safety, that's certainly something that that could be done as the county uh. Is looking ahead to um the spot safety improvements I mentioned earlier, that is certainly one of them. So um all those things we have to be cognizant of as we look at new developments. I will say it's it's just not as simple as saying, hey, developer, you need to build a parallel hood, pay for it. And by the way, we'd like it to be at least forty-five or fifty-five miles an hour so that people use that instead of fanning, probably not realistic.
That's kind of the, I mean, for the township perspective. Uh pulling out of that cemetery, I don't know if you've tried to do that, uh on basically driveways that we have, I mean, I'm down there. And it's like you can't turn your head fast enough to see how fast people are coming over that hill, so that's kind of a big safety concern, I think. What we need to address.
I know, just coming over that hill, I don't know how many times coming from the east, coming over that hill. Not that anybody has any control of, but those little four-legged creatures that like to run across right there. Uh you know, and if if we're going to be increasing the traffic flow and traffic unfortunately is going to increase, we know. Anybody that is going to sit here and say it's not is living in fantasy world. You know, are we? Are we, I I just, I for for the, so the township, I have to make sure that we are not necessarily just looking at the cheapest and the best, but the safest. You know, and 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 the best, and all of those things, you know, but. Uh you know, I I have a question I know is going to be posed, I mean, I'll probably get the phone call later today, well, how many millions of dollars are they going to spend on a roundabout, how many, you know, but. I'm just saying, this, these are things that I know the residents want to make sure that we are looking at and paying attention to, that there are other alternatives to. And we just need to have a good plan.
Yeah, fair question, I I can tell you right now, I mean, the the S-Bank cost for the roundabout is about one twenty million. Uh so it's it's far cry from, you know, tens of millions.
Half, so half a mile maybe.
I mean, yeah, it did that, yeah.
Well, we'll add um. The state of Ohio, ODOT, we spend about a hundred and eighty million dollars a year on safety improvements. I think it's, if not the highest, one of the highest per capita in the country. So there is safety money available and some of them are really targeted for walkability improvements. Um, also for roadside departures, people run off the road, shoulder widens, that kind of stuff. Um, county's been successful on many projects partnered with us both on and off state routes, um. The Vancher six oh five project safety funded, so. There's actually a fair amount of resources available. For the spot improvements. So, um, and it does, it's not restricted to. Um, state routes by any means, if you have a crash pattern. Or if you have a geometric deficiency of narrow shoulders, what we're talking about here. We can point to that, say, this is a good investment, try to save a life or reduce crashes, so.
Alrighty, we have some folks just walked in, so I'm just gonna go ahead and ask a first minute questions for anybody. Pertaining to the ODOT and, and, uh, Delaware County engineers.
What's the timeframe on the, uh, roundabout at Vancher Harlem?
Yeah, so Vancher Harlem, uh, were really still in the planning statements for that, uh, it wouldn't be any earlier than.
Tony addressed it, but, uh, if the Westerville merger goes through and all that, and all this planning and coordination. It will be, you know, coordinated with, with Westerville with all that and. How that all takes. How does that go down?
Yes, we, uh. We've had some of those discussions with Westerville, uh, to be. Uh, to be frank and upfront, uh, we are, um. The county is in a position, uh, I think. And I don't want to speak for county commissioners, but I can speak towards from the county engineer's office. Uh, we are neutral, we think this is an issue between, uh, residents Harlem Township and residents of Westerville along the merger. Uh, from a road maintenance standpoint, uh. Funds that go to the county engineer's office for road maintenance, uh, don't come with authority to maintain. City streets, uh, we don't maintain city streets in Delaware and Sunbury. And any other incorporated area inside. Uh, Delaware County. That said, we are aware that the, uh, revised code speaks to a transition plan. It would be, you know, if the merger were to move ahead, it would be. Uh, certainly our intention not to just. Drop everything and we, that's not. It's not responsible and it's not reasonable, but we. Would be, uh, in a position of, of. Basically asking Westerville to. Reimburse for those costs of county road maintenance. Now bridges stay county bridges on the county and, and through routes. Uh, and you already said the state route bridges remain state's responsibility, road itself. Uh, becomes a city street. In essence, uh, there's no statutory authority for the county to. I don't pay for those improvements or maintenance.
I actually brought, um, an ODOT document. That basically, the revised code is rather complex. With many references, even just in this area. So ODOT has distilled, hey, if you're on this type of road in this kind of location, what activities? Are whose responsibility? So, oh, you can electronic copy as well, but. It kind of untangles the different. Different responsibilities that are out there in different situations. So you guys can have an informed idea. So. The roadway infrastructure maintenance responsibility. Not the worst acronym. Hopefully helpful. And if you have questions, obviously, reach out to either of us and we'll talk you through it.
Anything else from the public? Yo, my chance.
Appreciate the time. I would ask, um, thank you for mentioning the zoning overlay to some thirty seven. That's one of our interactions, ODOT doesn't control land use, but we want to make sure we are. Working with the local authority, we're considering that when we look at driveway permits and applications, um. Cause really our piece of the pie is. What's the access to the roadway? What does that look like? We want to make sure we're. Considering your zoning overlay and understanding that. Yeah, that'd be perfect. I'll leave a card with you when I'm done. So thank you for sharing that. Thanks for the time today.
Thank you very much. Alright. Uh, just move on to a couple little items here real fast, uh. We have a resolution to file a legal action. Uh, against the. Address on Center Village. So, uh, you know, you, I would like to read that in.
Chairman, I would, uh. Remember that we approved, uh, for the Delaware County Prosecutor's Office. File legal action on behalf of Harlem Township trustees against Derek Neff located at one two one one six. Center Village Road, Glean, Ohio for operating commercial business in a residential area only.
Have a motion to have a second. I will second it.
Well, I'm familiar with this one. Is there any? Discussion on this one?
Well, I was just gonna say we can have a discussion, uh. Mike, you wanna take the discussion? You probably are. You know, I know I have some information.
This is down there that's, uh, he bought a, uh. Piece of property in a residential area. It's just that side of Miller Ball. Um, and he's doing a lot of dump truck, he parks his dump trucks there. It looks like dump trucks from out of. I mean, he initially said it was just him and his relatives, but there's a lot more dump trucks going in and out there. Lot of customer complaints about that, um. His counsel had gotten with prosecuting attorneys and told them they didn't want any. Any kind of, uh, legal action going on, so they were gonna pull out. And they, they've been playing phone tag back and forth, back and forth. My opinion, it's just a stall tactic, so. Uh, Corey, you need to do something about it. And so he's just gonna go forward with the, uh. With the law, a lawsuit against them, civil suit. Against them. If they pull out between then and now, I guess that's okay, but. We can't sit and wait until they decide that, uh, it's advantageous to them to pull out, so.
Gotcha, makes sense, I think.
Any other questions? Alright, so I have a motion and a second, no other discussion. Uh, one favor, aye? I oppose, same sign. Okay. We have a, from, from the fiscal officer. A request for a. Approved twenty twenty four permanent appropriations.
Okay. Uh, resolution twenty four dash zero three zero five, T dash zero zero two, approve twenty twenty four permanent appropriation. I moved to approve the twenty twenty four permanent appropriation for the capital project. Fund OPWC fund capital outlay. Or, or to, uh, two hundred ninety eight thousand, two hundred dollars.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All post same sign. Alright, uh, is anything else from the public? Anything else from the board? Nothing out in Zoom land? I don't entertain motion.
I must do adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry, motion in the second. Sure, we haven't voted yet.
In light of. So the video I saw of the property of office speaking from without drop. I've already talked with Corey about it, I'm bending them a cease and desist. I just wonder if maybe instead of having to wait, if something doesn't happen, that doesn't cease and desist. That maybe, uh, you want to do something about. Or letting Corey be able to do something legally against that property if it doesn't stop, or do you just want to wait until?
So that should cover anything that Corey would need.
No.
It's a different property. I would say we need to get information from Corey as to what our next, our best steps are.
And we saw, also need to address the property which. Uh, what, what's his take on that one so far? The one you're mentioning.
Well. Situation on that was. Really, it's kind of following the same, same lines as, uh, as NEF's, uh, they. Came in immediately started addressing it. They've been in here with the, uh, zoning commission, the zoning commission. For whatever reason, it's indicated that they're gonna, they're gonna, this, and they're well within their rights to come in and try to do a planned commercial district. Whether it would flow or not. Um, they came in, he brought, he was in with his lawyer, uh, they talked a little bit to the zoning commission, figure out what they needed to do. They were supposed to be back, but he wasn't here last night. Um. I don't know if they realize or they think it's not very viable or not. I kind of got the impression from. Talking to the lawyer when I was down there and I met with him initially on this, that they would, uh. That he knew that they were in the wrong down there. So I don't know if it's another stall tactic or what, but, you know. I, I'm sure you guys saw that video.
Oh, yeah.
And have listened to it, that's horrible. I mean.
Especially it's the hours that it's going on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we need to do something for these guys.
I would, I would say we ask. I would, I would, if we can make a motion, I get, alright, hold on, we have a motion on the floor. No, we, uh, it's a motion to adjourn, so we can do that one. Uh.
What's the video?
Um, the neighbor is, took a video when it had sale on, listening to. It's basically cordial business and it sounds like what they're doing is they're getting there either in the morning or at night, much of when that was taken.
The, the motions that's on the floor, I, I, I vote. Vote no to adjourn the meeting.
No.
Okay, that's alright, I just, I think we need to bring it back in. So I have a note of adjournment.
No.
No, no, okay, so.
It's down there, they're cleaning off their forms, it sounds like they're just hammering their forms. This land hammers at six, five thirty and six o'clock in the morning and it sounds horrible. If those residents gotta endure that every day of the week. We need to do something.
I, I, on, on that. I would, I would like to give it, if they could have a motion to give Mike. The authority to get with Corey and see what, how, what our fastest action would be if it's a cease and desist from the county prosecutor then or whatever. I would like to give Mike the authority to move forward with that.
Yeah, I agree. Do we need to attach that to an address though, or something?
Yes.
Yes.
Address, partial ID number or something.
Yeah, to use.
That would.
Can we recess for a minute? Cause I need to go.
Yeah.
Okay, motion to recess.
Yeah, you're good.
I just.
So they're doing all that, banging around construction noise. Is it? Are there, is it, and he says he's running a business out of there, or it sounds?
Yes.
Seems like, yeah.
Apparently that's his headquarters. We'll get to have Mike when he comes back, but.
Okay.
It's twelve oh thirty nine Center Village Road. Mario Capocia.
What was that again?
Uh, his name is Mario. C A P O C C I A. Capocia.
Any address?
Twelve oh thirty nine Center Village Road in Gleana.
Is this the one Mike's looking at? Because I need this information for this, so if you could back up for a minute, please.
It's one two zero three nine.
Hold on, Tom, what was the name of the gentleman?
Mario Capocia.
Spell the last name, please.
C A P P O C I A or something like that.
C A. P O C C I A.
What was the address, please?
One two zero three nine.
Alright, mostly come back in.
So now you're gonna bring it back in.
So Mike, you have that address?
Yeah, one two zero three nine Center Village Road.
Thank you.
Breathing stages, Mario. C A P O C C I A.
So my only. Record is business is Capocia Foundations LLC.
Yeah, it's a foundations company.
Okay, so it is.
Board walls type thing.
Commercial activity, we verify that's not just, he's not just.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm. Soon as I got. And it's been about one or two months ago when we got the first complaint down there. I went down there, met with him and his lawyer. And they had their options of what they needed to do. They waited a month before they got in here. In fact, I was getting ready to. Send another letter out to him saying we're gonna show it down when they showed up at. One of the zoning commission meetings. And then they were supposed to do something there. Now they've missed this month's zoning commission meeting. And.
You have the video now.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to make sure, cause like, the no sound ordinance thing, it's like.
We don't have a sound ordinance, but. Of a residential property.
Yep, that makes sense.
And it's the, it's, we have a complaint from at least one. If not multiple neighbors.
We have, yeah, from one, I could get it from multiple.
But we have, well, to look, to go by what we've said, we need a complaint, we have an initial complaint, so we can move forward with it. And my suggestion would be to contact the prosecuting attorney's office and see if we can get an immediate cease and desist order. Or something along those lines.
I have that letter typed up and I sent Corey to look at the cease and desist letter, so if I get the approval. Able to prove that I can send it, so I haven't typed up to set up and be sent out today.
So I'd, I'd make the, 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 the motion that we give Mike the authority after he comes, is in contact with. Prosecuting attorney's office to move forward with the latter as approved by the prosecuting attorney's office.
And in addition to that information you have there, he doesn't live on that property, so it's not even a possibility of an extended home use.
Gotcha.
It's just a business right there in the middle of residential area.
Yeah. Yeah.
And this is dealing with property one two oh three nine Center Village Road, Glean, Ohio.
Correct.
Who was that whole kit and caboodle emotion?
That's a motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All post same sign. Alright, I would not entertain a motion to go home.
A motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, I have a second.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.